Six o'clock. Citizens' remarks and complaints?
There's Sue on the floor.
Everybody knows me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I own a lot around the water street where the basketball court is. I'm getting calls about people being down there late at night doing drugs and maybe y'all can't do nothing about that. But my main concern is this. There was a, there's a truck. The name of the trucking company is O-R-G-I-L-L. It delivers and drops things off at L and M and I don't have a thing against L and M plumbing. But it backs out that way and it has broke Bubby's, we dedicated that in memory of Bubby Hines. So I'm gonna have to replace that stone. But I'm gonna try to get somebody to, the guys that play basketball and all that to help me do that. All right. Now, we had some discussion, some arguments with some people. I did in person. They were told that it belongs to the city of Piedmont. You all know it doesn't belong to me.
We're not.
You know that. But I'm willing to work with you all if you all wanna help me do something. Paula's been knowing me for a long time. I'm just at the point, I don't wanna take the hoops down. I want the kids to enjoy themselves. Everybody's kid is welcome there. Everybody is welcome there. Nobody has the right to tell nobody that their child can't play on that basketball court. Okay? It's for all of them. If the parents are around there, sure, I want them to supervise them and let them play together and do things. And I don't want the big ones to run the small ones off. I don't want some parent to come around every kid and say, "You got to go because this belongs to the city." No, it's for all of them. For every kid in Piedmont to play around there.
That's great.
And that's exactly what I did with it. It needs a little bit of work done on it, but I'll, I'll get to that. And I don't know if you all know anything about these trucks coming around there. See, I'm not up here.
Oh, what, first off, do you have any time that they get there and we can get Clayton and Jimmy down there to see what's going on?
Well, I don't know. Where'd Andy go here saying, Andy? Now, this is my granddaughter, you all know Andy.
Oh, yes.
Okay? And I put her, I said, "Andy, if there's any problems or anything," 'cause I can't run up here every day, "talk to the people," or talk, I, I put her just in charge of doing that. Now, little kids, let's be realistic. Her, her son, which is my, my great grandson, he'll say, "Well, this belongs to my grandma," like the kids do. That don't mean them kids can't go in there and play. That's kid stuff. Every kid's welcome there. And I want every, every adult in Piedmont to cooperate with me and help me to keep this thing together. Paula and I've worked together for a long time. And if the police force has been informed and somebody calls and tells them that they're around there doing these drugs, well, do something about it. I can't.
Well...
I can't do that.
These guys do make their rounds.
I know.
You know, it's hard to catch anyone in the very act. And, uh, you know, they've got a lot of drugs off the streets in Piedmont.
Yeah, I know.
And I don't know if back, back there is one of your priorities, is it Clayton?
I'll make sure to go back there and clean out if there's any needles or anything on the ground. I do make my rounds back there specifically due to the children's presence and everything. They're going over as well. Make sure no one's back there messing around with the tracks.
Yeah. Well, I'm, like I said, everybody here knows me and you know where I live. And you know when I lived in Piedmont, I did a whole lot up here in Piedmont for the youth and for everybody. But I want all this beddicking stuff. This saying, "This kid can't play there," and "That can't play," that is not what it's about. It's about the community. It's about all of them.
Well, I'm glad that...
Yeah. And I don't want nobody standing up telling somebody, "No, this belongs to the city, belongs to me," but I'll work with the city. If you all call me and say something is going on wrong and, or something's happened, I'll, I'll work with you. But it, it's just a whole lot of misunderstanding and parents should go around there with their children and talk to the children. Kids will be kids, I don't care where you put them.
You're right.
They're gonna be kids and they're gonna say things.
And bully words.
And bully, yeah. And you need to talk with them. And explain to them, "Let's get together, let's, let's play together, let's, this is a nice place for you all." You know? And I know she do it 'cause she not done a lot of things together up in Piedmont. But that was just my complaint. Now, I'm gonna check with L and M about this man with his truck thing. I'm gonna check with them and see if they would kindly tell him, "Don't back that rig up on our court." Because how we gonna get money to fix it? And now I've got to worry about fixing Bubby's stump. You know, where he matched it and the lights and stuff. And it's been there for a while. You know, we dedicated that in memory of Bubby.
Well, if I can personally be any help, I will.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I pre, and TJ Coleman's working with me, it was TJ and my son Beaver and all of them that we all got that stump. Now, maybe they can fix it over here and I won't have to get a new one, I don't know. But we don't wanna do without that, that's in his memory. You know? And if y'all have any suggestions, they got my phone number here or anything I need to do, feel free to call me.
Okay.
I'll work with you, okay?
Yes.
And I appreciate your time, God bless you.
Well, thank you, thank you.
And you wanna tell me about this?
Marcus Clay.
Yes, on, on what Aunt Sue was saying, saying there about the basketball court. Now, I, I asked her, "Where, where's it all coming, coming from that this kid and that kid can't, can't play back there?" That's where it's a start, a starting from. 'Cause personally, they're telling my kids they can't play back there.
You're telling your kids?
Yes. And, and, and like I said, and, and the, the, the city had other people calling here saying, saying that, "Well, why can't they play back there?" No, and I, I know, I know for a fact there, it is not owned by the city. But the city, Blacktop that, me, Paul Coleman, Benny Twieman, Poochy Pecker paid for those, those poles there down D and B and had them built. I, man, see, I welded them up here in the city building and, and had, had them built, built there. I said, "The city didn't, didn't pay, pay for them." No, I, I said, "I, I was for, for,"
Excuse me, Marcus, didn't Jean Keys' daughter help?
No, what, Jean, Jean Keys, she, she bought the, I guess, yeah, she, she had a, yeah, 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 a class, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know she, 'cause she called and she helped and I appreciate all that.
Okay, no, no, this, this, no, the, the poles, the poles was when, when they, they first put them up there, back in ninety-five, ninety-six there. When we did that firstly, they, they just had the one pole up there and people say, "Well, they, they would like to have them, like the old basketball court with the two poles." So that's what we did, did there. And the backboards got, got bad and the rims got bad. And that's when, uh, uh, yeah, 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 did, did all that there. And I, I mounted them and put them back up on, on the regular, regular poles, poles there. And like I said, I, I know it, it's not, it's not owned by, by the city. But I, I don't like it there when, when, I mean, when kids come and, come and say that, "Well, you can't play there, you're not gonna, uh, play there." 'Cause it's, it's owned by my, my grand, grandparents and, and all that there. I mean, and which, which is...
But that's when you need to step up and say, "Come here, kids. Come here."
Sue, how, you, you...
Kids will be kids.
And I know, but I know what you're calling for.
Oh, no, I, I know, yeah.
Let Marcus talk.
Yeah, I mean, she, she, she exactly knows where, where it's, where it's coming from, but this ain't, this ain't the first time. I mean, I mean, this, I mean, like, every other summer or every summer, I mean, this, this, this happens there. And I said, and the kids, they don't know, I mean, not to believe, uh, not to believe the little boy or whatever. Or the parents don't even know not to believe the little boy. If that was the case, you wouldn't have three or four people call the city, city building and, and ask if their kids can come back there and play. I mean, if, if that's, if that's the case, I mean, we're gonna have that so much. When we find another place to, to move, uh, to move them, so, 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 I mean, it, it won't be, be no trouble or anything. I mean, if that's what it, what it's gonna be...
And that's where the bullying starts, when it comes, the bullying starts then because one person's told that it's not owned by a family member.
That's where the gang stuff in, 'cause it's not the city of Piedmont.
Oh, I, I know, I, I, I know, I know that.
The way we put the sound of versus Clay Park.
Yeah, that's what I'm wanting. I want something to let these children know that they all can play there.
Everyone's welcome.
Everyone's welcome.
I mean, that's, that's no, no, just like the...
Everybody's willing to help?
The, the playground there, when, 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 uh, the, the Board of Education gave us that, that, at Park, Parker Ford Playground sits at, at there, there was a part there, a fifty by fifty part there that the city had to own to put the playground equipment. That was the stipulation. So the city, well, no, Norm Lakey donated that to, to the city. But everything around that, uh, uh, the two or four, four things there, you got Norm Lakey owns some, Twieman's owned that, Freddie Washington owns that and stuff there. But see, we never had no trouble, I, 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 that there. I mean, that's why, I, I mean, I mean, this is the only thing we got, we got there, so I mean, we can't be...
Well, since you go, I let me ask you a question, since you did all that work back there. I got permission last year to have a half court built back at the pool. What all does it take to get that together?
And, and I forget who, someone else said something about that last year. I, I'd be willing to, to, to help do, do that there. I, I would, I would definitely be willing. If I didn't work shift work there, someone has to be on the council, but I mean, if I, if I'm not gonna put a hundred percent in, I, I don't wanna. I, 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 but I, I would help as much as I can.
And I would like to get that done, but it's gonna be a half one at the very end of the pool with a separate entrance. So if the pool and all that, you could still play basketball. But it's only gonna be a half court, it's not gonna be a whole court, 'cause we got volleyball court and everything else there. But if you could get me some names, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I mean, whenever, I mean, you like the, the starter, whenever, I, I, I would be more than happy to, to help with it.
Blacktop's better than concrete for that?
Well, it just, uh, now, over there, probably con, concrete, only because it, you, you have to dig up the grass and, and where the area is so soft and everything. Back there, you already had, had a base and everything, uh, thing there. I mean, it, it, but, but I, I think, I, I don't know what it will cost or anything, but I, but, uh, but anytime, I mean, I will be willing to help. I mean, when you want to start, start that there, I mean, I know, uh, guys up at Work Era, I mean, would donate stuff, don't, I mean, and anything, I, I know sometimes Kings for donate stuff to, uh, and, uh, I'll be willing to...
Okay, whatever you can do to help out.
Okay, to conclude, to conclude this, would a sign saying Clay Family Playground or something like that be? And what, what, would that be a acceptable...
I was gonna go talk to Paula about it, I didn't, you know, I always talk to you. I, um, something.
Dedicated under Bubby's, Bubby's, that's all I know.
And I'm gonna check and see if I can't get Bubby's, TJ and my son Beaver and all of them said, "We got to get his stump fixed again where that truck backed over and broke it." And everybody Piedmont donated, you know, from Bubby's stump.
And Frank, Frank, uh, uh, donated and did, uh, did an engraving on it there. And I'm sure you take it back over to Frank there, he, he would be, yeah, he would take care of it.
I don't know Frank, Frank who?
Uh, that was a tomb, tombstone.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, I have to say the tombstone.
I, I'm sure Frank would, would help with that.
'Cause I hate to see it all messed up, like, and I put lights around it. Somebody took the lights out.
See, and a couple times, I mean, we put garbage cans back, back there, but they rolled down the hill and everything and...
Well, getting back to the issue here, would a sign satisfy everybody?
Satisfy me and whatever Paula thinks that...
And put on, everyone welcome?
Everybody's welcome.
Well, it was also brought to the attention that the town has been taking care of that. But my mom and dad and us have been going down there, cutting the grass around it, picking all the trash up around, so that was another issue.
Well, the town hasn't been taking care of that as far as I know.
They haven't done it in like years.
No, no, and like I said, and Sue, you can contest this. When you, when you donated that, that to, to the city there, what, what, you let them lease it or the, the, the...
I didn't, I didn't back it up, I didn't lease it.
Oh, oh, okay, well, 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 when, when you, when you, uh, put that on, on there, the stipulation was the town had to pay for the taxes. Was, was that...
Now, I pay taxes on my own property.
Well, I, I thought, I mean, I, 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 I know that, but I thought that, that, that they, they had, had to pay, pay the taxes enough because we, we, we did, we did at one time, I mean, cut the grass and everything around, around there.
But that's volunteer stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, well, I, I was, when I was, I mean, probably fifteen, twenty years or so, so then when we, when we first did it.
And then you come around and cut the stuff, I thought you was volunteering. I said, you know, and I ain't gonna hold y'all's meeting up.
Let's move on, so a sign is what we agree on?
Yeah, and whatever Paula feels is...
Marcus?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not up to me, I mean, I just want, I mean, it be open to every, every kid and, and us.
That's, 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 and when he was saying about, about kids saying they couldn't play on there because he's referring to my son saying that because there was a lot of bullying going on down there and he knew who brought, who it belonged to. And it was also, this has happened in the past, when I had issues with his older son and I had to call my grandma and they was on the phone on it about then. So he should've known from the past because this happened just recently when his son, the younger one, and my son was back there. My son was just trying to say that, you know, belongs to everybody and that's where the bullying was started.
No, that, that is not what he said belongs to everybody.
Well, we're not here to argue, we're here to make peace and settle something.
Argue, we're here to settle an issue. And, uh, so we're gonna say we'll try to get a sign up down there.
I'll try. Seventy-nine, thirty-seven ninety-eight.
Thirty-seven ninety-eight?
Mm-hmm. I'm not there.
Rick, do we have your attention here?
Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Is it, is that all of it?
Well, we had Billy Davis sign up, but he came in before the meeting and what did he want done for it?
He's been telling us what...
He's got a water runoff problem.
Yeah, he, he was a senior, he had children, but he didn't have a free baby.
With one race stop somewhere, but it's actually coming from the mountain.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on here.
But they just backed over and went over.
Minutes from the previous meeting. Approval of corrections and...
I'll make a motion that we approve minutes while I'm reading.
All in favor? Okay, minutes are approved. Next thing up is correspondence. I have a couple of correspondences here. This is from the, uh, House of Representatives, Dave B. McKinley. And he's asking us to come up with some priorities and questionnaires that we think that Mineral County and the town of Piedmont needs. I sent them this last year. Uh, Ms. Wendy Madden has been back in touch with me. And, uh, we, over this stuff last year, and actually, Mr. McKinley did come into this office last year. And, uh, hopefully he can come again this year to look over the priorities that we have. And I ask everyone in the council to take a look at this and add the priorities as they see them. We'll make another copy of this, pass it around, Paula. But anyhow, it says, "With the beginning of the new year, we turn our focus to priorities for the new year and solutions to the changes we face. During the past eight years, we have discovered many of these solutions in meetings and discussions with constituents across the first congressional district. We've listened to concerns, taken this feedback to Washington and turned it into an action figure. The feedback provided by our constituents has made a difference." So in other words, what we did say and what we put on there last year, they took it all to, to DC and hashed it all out. Says, "Please complete the attached form, mail it to my Morgantown office. Congressman David McKinley, seven oh nine Beechhurst Avenue, Suite twenty-nine, Morgantown, West Virginia." Okay, so that's that. Has anyone else got any correspondence? Well, I got one more correspondence, it was a, a bill from the railroad. When we started this project, this landslide, they said that they would work with us on all the things that we could possibly, all the things that they could possibly do to help us out. So their help was sending us another bill for fifty-six thousand bucks.
Fifty-six thousand?
Fifty-six thousand dollars. For flagging and maintenance fees and all of that. And they, we haven't needed a flagman up there for several weeks. But anyhow, I forwarded that on to, uh, to the governor's office, Senator Randy Smith and Gary Howe. So we'll see where that goes. I just sent that just yesterday, today. So we just got that, just the day before yesterday, I think.
Is that on top of the other bill that you got?
No, that's two.
Oh. Went up a little bit, huh?
Yeah, but for no reason.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Did they bug with their tracks?
No, it ain't my, it ain't, uh, the city of Piedmont's fault they put their tracks there. And it's already been deemed that the sewer line was not the cause of the crawl. It was the natural spring that actually started the slide. And, you know, the, uh, guys that done the testing up there, uh, the geotecs have that in writing, so... We'll, uh, see where it goes with the governor's office. And I'm planning on making another phone call. This'll make my fourth or fifth one to Jacksonville. Evidently, I ain't doing much good or I wouldn't be getting lower bills. So... Okay. Moving on, officers' reports. Start with you, Don. The, uh, the water bills that we approved in the minutes of this, wait, wait there. Okay. Rick?
Uh, don't have anything really. We did find out a problem up on the hill, we're gonna be working on that sewer system there at Miller's, so...
Yeah, got the...
As soon as Ernie, uh, Ernie gets himself up.
Well, Ernie's in pretty bad shape yesterday.
Yeah, I know.
How he's gonna be for the rest of the week? Sometimes he can shake some things off, other times...
Yeah, I know, I heard him Monday, it was horrible. But, uh, we'll, we'll come here to see what happens.
While we're on the streets, I'm just gonna go ahead and hear there.
Well, yeah, you can do it in your report if you want.
I'm on the streets personally.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, on your part, uh, me and Ben met with, uh, four guys from somewhere, which they were all Department of Highways, some Department of Transportation. There is gonna be an upgrade on the curb and the ramps. That is definite right now, no cost to the city of Piedmont, and there's thirty-seven locations that's gonna be taken care of. They walked us through the locations and wanted to know if there was some that we could not do and take and slide the money over to put sidewalks in. And we walked clear up to almost your house and there was, what, four of them? We deemed... You can't make one where there's a retaining wall, 'cause if you cut into that and it falls, then you're responsible. So there was three of them up there, we decided that we would hold off on. And that would get us having a sidewalk going up Child's Avenue where the bricks are.
Are they gonna take the bricks out?
They're gonna take them and reuse them, make like a five-foot sidewalk and put two rows of the bricks, so you don't lose the historical thing of the bricks, which they gotta take to the Historical Society, 'cause that's my definitely. And then at the top of the hill where the school bus is, for the sidewalk there for the kids.
They have a stop there. Or, or a bus stop there.
They're not, they're not into that.
No, they're just sidewalk people. So we did that walk through yesterday. And like I said, the, the ADA ramps and the curbs are all ready to go. We have nothing to do then, we have no crisis. Then if we wanna do streets later on our own to, to join them, we can fill out a grant through the, what is it, A R C?
ADA.
A R C dot gov. We gotta send in an intent, an, an intent to sup, to apply. And if we are considered a economically distressed or an at-risk, we'll get a hundred percent funding. But we gotta wait for the, what would they, the census to try to get that, if not at the eighty-twenty match. So right now, we're just worried about the ramps and stuff.
And this brings us back to the twenty-twenty census that everyone needs to get on board with. This twenty-twenty census is gonna mean a lot for medium household income of Piedmont. I know that some people don't like to fool with this and don't fool with it. But, uh, it's going to be a game changer if we get out of the Cumberland Valley census.
We'll do it.
And I've been preaching this for two years and I'm working with people from the Census Bureau. So far, it hasn't went too far, but we, I did get a commitment last Thursday, uh, saying it's a possibility. So... Where it goes depends on the people that actually do their census. In the past, no one from people actually worried about census. And now it's becoming an issue.
We should put something in with the water bill on that letter stating that we need people to pull it out of here in Piedmont so that it's considered...
Well, I was, I was thinking that also, but I was thinking to wait until, uh...
It comes out.
Well, after, after the first of, uh, June, it may be something out there that we've got some answers to. But yes, it wouldn't hurt to have everybody realize what, what a potential this is. Okay, Suzie, you're up next.
Apparently, uh, we got a complaint here with fixing the sidewalk. Uh, from, uh, John Anderson. Top of Oak Street and West Hampshire Street sidewalk that is falling in and would like to repair it and willing to help replace it. Uh, I didn't know, I'll check this one out.
Where's that at?
The top of Oak Street and West Hampshire Street.
If he wants to fix it, go for it.
Well, he said he would like to help replace it.
Well, sidewalks, I don't know, that's a gray area.
That's what we, like we were talking about earlier, that's what we're talking about, hopefully getting a grant.
Yeah.
To do the sidewalks there and get all the ramps.
I'll check for it, I'll check it out, that's, that's still a problem there, we oughta go and check it out. I'll do that on the way home.
Okay, is that all you got, Rick?
That's it.
Suzie?
Uh, first on that, that grant info, eighty-twenty, can our twenty percent be in kind services? Could our guys maybe tear them apart and, for our twenty percent of the...
No, if, if we have to pay the twenty, it's, it's pain.
And, and it, it depends, it depends a lot on this census thing. We can make an intent for a grant.
We got ten years.
And we got ten years to, to do that, but the, but the handicap access curbs are gonna be a go in the curves.
They're never gonna be done in October, by October, that's what they told us.
But, but the, uh, if we can get this census changed, that's gonna put us in a whole different ballgame.
And we'll get that designation, we can get a hundred percent funding instead of the eighty-twenty.
I mean, our medium household income in Piedmont is higher than Kaiser and about the same as the people in Cumberland. And we can't do nothing about it because of the census.
I just don't understand, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, because we're under Cumberland Valley census. And it's been let go for the last thirty-five years, well, thirty-seven and a half years.
The only thing I have is, um, we had planned a bad buildings meeting for the twenty-third of May. Due to scheduling conflicts, she asked if we could postpone it to the thirtieth. And so we'll update, we sent out almost sixty letters for that place, and so we'll, we'll upgrade them. Marcus, I thought you stayed. That grate, they were talking about a sewer grate?
Yeah, back, back, uh, basketball court there, uh, you got an alley, alley through, through there. It's a...
Sewer links for...
Uh, the, the man, the manhole, they, they said that someone ran into it, 'cause it, it's set up at, at high, concrete square.
Where's this at?
Square, right by the basketball court. Yeah, it said it looked like a truck or something running into it, said that the whole thing is broke, broke off.
You gonna look into that, Rick? Okay. Okay, Paula?
Okay. I had a community service worker who started painting over the pool yesterday, so we got two, two of the outbuildings, the little admission building and the pump house is all painted blue. There's any one gallon of paint left, this was donated paint, donated by a person. And she said she wants to buy the rest of the paint. And then we're gonna get gold and do the outline in the gold. I have the guy supposed to call me back about this, the walkway on the side of the pool this week. Hopefully that's gonna be done before pool season opens. The pool paint itself will be in Friday. I got an email today that FedEx will be bringing the pool paint Friday, so if the weather stays good, we can start painting the pool next week.
They gonna drop it up here?
Yes. Yes, it will be delivered here. There should be six packages, twelve gallon paint. Then we can get the paints. We're hoping to get it painted this year so we can bake in there before we have to put the water to it, cause every year the weather's been bad. And it's only got to sit for a couple of days and then we gotta put the water to it. So hopefully, we can get it painted, maybe even two coats on it and let it sit before we have to put water to it. That should be all good, like I said. Maybe by the weekend, we can have the rest of the buildings painted, the actual building. And they're painted W V U blue, real dark, a real dark blue, so I wanna get the W V U gold to do the trim in. And then Ernie's working on fixing the urinals. The state's stated that it had to be so many inches in the women's bathroom, had to have a handicap ramp. And he also found the lift.
Oh, yeah, there. Ramp going into there, into there.
There's ramps going in, there's ramps are in there. There's not a ramp. They went in and said we needed to get rid of that divider and put a handrail in, in the women's. And the men's urinal had to be moved up to, I think, eighteen inches. I'm not sure. He's got the letter.
Also, uh, men's bathroom is the same as the ladies'. We gotta have a handicap access there also.
Yeah, somebody come in and went through it and stated what all we needed done, so. They're working on getting that done too, so. And we're hoping to have an opening Memorial Day weekend. If everything goes okay, we'd like to be open Friday, the twenty-fourth. For an evening swim, the weekend of swimming, and then do we, e- evenings and weekends till the kids get out of school. That's the plan. We hope the weather cooperates.
Yeah, that's, that's been a problem. We hustle and bustle all the time for that. You been through that too, ain't it worked? Okay, police report.
Um, continued traffic and, um, enforcement and also recovered more narcotics like as usual. Uh, was trying to get in contact with Chris for the radios, so we finally, I was actually able to get a personal phone number off and to contact him personally for it. Uh, just gotta get ahold of him. Uh, for anyone who didn't know, Spirit, there was an issue with her and the possibility of almost her lung or some severe ending. Uh, got good news. She's sore. She's just gotta take slow, so she can take more breaks and she's eating on a more strict diet. She needs to lose weight. So is that, that's about it? Uh, there was an issue about the hips. They, they first said it was nothing, but then, uh, they just wanted to check her out anymore and when they checked her out, it was everything good. She was just sore. Uh, cause she's a shepherd log, and she always have hips and back issues. And, um, we figured that's part of it, but got good news. It's just, just a minor issue that she just needs to recover. Get some rest and she just needs to lose some weight. So she's on a strict diet, cutting out a lot of stuff for her. That's about it for her.
What about the repeaters?
The repeaters? Uh, they're up and ready. I think that, that's how we gotta get ahold of Chris for. Uh, Chris is gonna do all of our updating for us, um. He says, uh, coming out, um, for the cruises and everything. We just gotta get ahold of him, cause it's basically back between Jimmy and me, get ahold of him in his office. He wasn't there at the office, then he'd call us when we're here, everything like that. So I'll find out if he has a personal phone number while I was actually up there at Bill Davis's.
Chris, eh?
Uh, I can't remember his last name, but he's actually my neighbor.
Hello, that's, uh.
Huh?
Hello, this is.
Okay, good.
Yep, just gotta get ahold of him and once everything worked out, we get to go.
All right, moving on to more unfinished business is the election.
Okay. Everything's coming along with the election. Okay, we had to follow procedure. We were down to, we had to publish the sample ballot between April seventeenth and the twenty-third. So that was published on the eighteenth. It was in the paper. The last day to register for the election was April twenty-second. That's over with. Early voting will begin here on April thirtieth. So one of my poll workers will go down to the county clerk's office and get the poll book on the twenty-ninth. So office workers will be doing the early voting from April thirtieth to May tenth during work hours. Then on May fourth, which is a Saturday, we will have early voting in pu- in person. We have to have one of them during the time before the election. Then we have to publish the sample ballot again between the sixth and the twelfth, so we decided we will publish it on the eleventh. Which is the last paper before the election on the thirteenth. And we had that meet and greet. We had about thirty people, about thirty people in attendance. And after all the hustle and bustle, we found out when Paul asked, trying to ask what the census wanted, that many things were kid, things for kids to do, potholes fixed in town. Something done with the Memorial Park on Child's Avenue. They would like to see the pool as a game room. Out-of-town owners take care of their property, fishing, biking and hiking trails around the area, and community service workers to help out around town. And Paul couldn't be here, but he wants his cleanup. He wants to make the week to be between Saturday, May eighteenth until the twenty-fifth. On the eighteenth up to the twenty-fifth, he wants all the residents to clean up their areas. And the big cleanup day in town will be the twenty-fifth, where everybody comes out as a community to do the big cleaning. He would like to have a meeting here. He's gonna set a date to have a meeting here for anybody that wants to come and ask him questions. He'll do that and he'll hopefully put it on the Facebook page, whatever date that is. Is that all we asked about that?
Basically, yeah. The twenty-fifth also is the day where hopefully we'll have trucks or whatever to put the garbage in to be disposed of.
What time is that supposed to start?
The Saturday one? I last year it started at eight o'clock.
We will stay on with this eight o'clock in the morning.
He'll set that up after he has a meeting, I think. But he wants to have a meeting, talk to some people. And on the sixteenth, we had the lay of the levy here. And we also had, the levy was published in the paper on April nineteenth, so we did everything to finish up our budget. So that was completed too. That's all.
Okay, well, I got a little bit to add about the, uh. About the, uh, uh, slide up there. C T L came in and drilled eight more holes to get a better core sample than what they had. Uh, they went down like fifty-five feet before they could get any kind of good rock. And, uh, that's going back to the geotech to determine what all they need to do. We do have plans that they came out with the first time. Now they thinking there's a more economical way to do this rather than all of the soldier tallies that they was putting in. So hopefully, it comes out a little bit cheaper and, uh. The, uh, Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management will accept this responsibility. So, uh, let's just hope. I mean, I'm thankful for what they've done so far, if nothing else. I mean, we got the sewer line fixed. The bank is relatively stabilized. But, uh, still, there's a lot to do there. The road and on Pearl Street is just going to pieces. I sent pictures to, uh, the governor's office and the senators last week. And, uh. I sent, also sent a, uh, quest in to get belt paid for the engineering services, such as C T L and the geotech. So hopefully, that goes good. And it's just a waiting game, cause those guys in Charleston don't move very fast. So. I'm really thankful for everyone that helped out with this project, uh, Senator Smith, Mr. Todorovic from Homeland Security. And Gary Howe from our delicacy, House of Delegates. Okay. Moving on to new business, water bill adjustment for Brian Longicker and Joyce Whisner, or Kizner. They was in here last time. And it wasn't on the agenda, and we couldn't do anything about it, but he presented his case. And Dawn?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and.
That would, that would be for thanks too?
Yes, both him and Joyce until we're done that. Make a motion that we go ahead and make adjustments for Longacre and Kestner's water bill.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll do the adjustment. Tri-Town's fireworks fundraiser, I don't know.
That was, um, up.
Where's he at?
Uh, I don't know. But he brought the paper in and, um. I had it here. Anyway, he, um, he wants, uh, here it is. Donations for the fireworks for the Fourth of July. Uh, he said it's still gonna be Star Fire Corporation doing it. Uh, Tim Evans is the fire technician. And he says, same as the last three years, you got, they have the insurance and everything else. Um, he's hoping that a lot of people will participate as far as giving a donation to get the fireworks, pay for the fireworks. He also stressed that the city also can give a donation. And it's supposed to go to the savings account at the First United Bank in P. Want. That's all I got on here.
Did they need some kind of permission or anything, like we need to?
The way he's talking, they're following procedures, what they've been doing for the last few years. Um, I'm, I'm sure that they know about the insurance and who's supposed to, uh, I remember something where you got permission from somebody or. Letter had to go in.
Yeah, and we, we need proof of insurance.
Right.
They, they supplied that last year.
All right.
I, I think we oughta table this until we get a little more information on what's needed here. Uh, right now, we're shooting in the dark as to what they did last year and plans need change.
Okay.
So, uh.
I'll make a motion. We table it till the next meeting.
I see.
All right.
Don't show me here.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. We'll table that till the next meeting and. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, hardware and software maintenance quote from, uh, from Neptune. This is, uh, uh, for the software and the maintenance for the handheld readers and chargers and. All the Bluetooth stuff that comes along with it to, uh, connect with the computer. And, uh, the charge for this stuff is twenty-five hundred and thirty dollars altogether. And it consists of, uh, five different things here. Uh, uh, Crimble Nomad nine hundred B handheld, Nomad charging cradle, Crimble. R nine hundred Bluetooth belt clip, uh, unit. Advantage two, complete, whatever that means. Uh. Ernie was more up onto this altogether, but the, uh, part of that, the license on this thing is one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. The hardware, maintenance and, uh, the units that I just talked about is twelve hundred and forty dollars. So this is, uh. This is something that, uh, is not actually, well, if you pay it after July first, it's twelve dollar and. Twelve dollar, uh, to do, twelve dollars and forty cents, uh, surcharge. Which comes out two percent. Uh. Ernie and, uh, T. I. was working on this thing a little bit more than me as far as knowing what all we was getting, so. Uh. I see no harm in actually, uh. Going ahead and table on this thing too. This isn't due of July. Is that right, Phil?
Right.
So we got another meeting coming up and.
Sir, Ernie can tell us more about it?
Yeah, uh, I know about it and I know about what all we was supposed to get, but these figures. Uh, evidently, this just came in, didn't it, Phil?
Yeah, it came in, uh, last week.
Last week? I never seen it till today. So I also think that this should be an issue that's tabled till we get a little bit more information. Guess we'll need a motion for that, to that effect.
Some information we table is till the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's two issues tabled, but we'll go on the next agenda, Phil.
Okay.
Uh, sorry about the, not knowing about this, but I haven't seen.
But it was nothing you could do about it anyway. Last week, we were, we still had to bring it to the meeting.
Well, true.
But, um, I think you were, you had meetings, when we, we, we didn't see you, remember, for a few days?
Yeah.
That, that, that's when it came in, so we weren't able, and I didn't think about it. When I did see you, it was like.
Yeah, I, I know things get lost in the shuffle, but anyhow, we still got time to do something about this and, and also me learn a little bit more about. Without being able to properly present it to you guys, I can't expect a, a vote on it. Okay. Moving on, uh, Home Fest two thousand nineteen.
I have about twenty-five vendors signed up already for Home Fest. And I'm just looking for volunteers to help this year. I know I have my. But anybody that wants to help, get ahold of me or, I'm just feeling, uh, and she went and has a question. Uh, July the.
Sixteenth.
Twelfth and thirteenth.
Twelfth and thirteenth.
I, uh, the, the fire truck or the truck pool is kind of gone downhill, so I thought. I got with, uh, Western Port and they're gonna have the truck pool this year. And maybe they can incorporate something different that will bring it back and then ever, every other year, they're gonna switch off. I'll have it next year. They'll have it.
We need to make sure the ones from over here are usually here, go over there. That way, it's gonna show them to come over here when it's their turn.
Yeah.
You got a pretty good crowd for that. Yeah, but usually they don't from Western Port, have any of them.
Four, four teams in it, like, was it four teams last year?
Yeah, it had to.
I sponsored too. Yeah.
You wanna know that, Suzie, that whoever you let borrow the rope there.
They got, I'm getting it back at home.
Cause they didn't bring it, they didn't bring it back.
Yeah. Who has it? I think it's out here.
We have it. It's over in the building. Is it blowed to you guys?
No, it's at best.
Is it Home Fest?
Oh, so you, y'all have it?
We have our, we, we bought a rope, didn't we?
Yeah, you, we have the ropes.
Oh, okay, cause, uh, cause therefore, we kept it over at Fire Hall and someone got it there la- last year.
Yeah.
Okay, the.
Yeah, we find it.
Yeah, and you got it back, okay.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're at right now, so. We're gonna have the car show again.
How many vendors?
About twenty-five so far. Now, as usual, most, you know, not all twenty-five is probably gonna show up, but. We have even half of those show up. That'll be nice.
Jimmy's got one, right?
Yeah.
And what's the? What's the criteria for the vendors, the same as it was last year?
Well, I, um, I usually set them up there on Green Street. But since, uh, Sammy's will be open, I message them and see if they mind if I use that same street for vendors. I didn't wanna butt into their bus, you know, take away from their business and they're gonna discuss it and let me know. And if, if they want it open, I could, I'll make other arrangements. We'll, we're flexible. We can find another street or something. I don't, I don't think they would have a problem, but, yeah.
I, I thought some of this stuff was nice being down on Backstreet around the playground and stuff.
I liked it back there too, cause you really didn't have to worry about the kids. They would do play on playground or the traffic there, but. A lot of folks said you oughta move it back out onto the street. None of that's in writing yet. I mean, if we, if we wanna put it back there, we can put it back there.
I'm open to that. Or even like just coming down Second Street. Or Third Street. Two more of the parks that would leave people.
Two words apart, so it would leave people, when they walk that far down, they would go walk on back into the.
Having wrestling back there, where they, they're gonna go back there.
Yeah, I, I thought that was a lot better back there, it was level. Uh, you know, there was people sitting up here on the hillside that was leaning over and.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, down back there, they could bring their chair and sit on a pretty level ground and.
Yeah, and then, uh.
We need to know that so we can clean up back there a little bit.
Well, within the next two weeks, I'll, I should have everything planned out. Uh, I know the car show is probably gonna be a lot bigger this year, because the lady got with me back in beginning of March. And it's on the, the all, all car show, um, schedule. So all the car clubs have it. And there's only one other show planned that day, and it's in Petersburg, I think. So I think we're gonna be there.
Well, this is another good reason, if the car show is gonna be big, to have. You know, that place over there only, only, uh, parks about twenty-five car. And, you know, over here, we could use some of this area right here, as long as it didn't block with our house, and. You know, maybe on some of this stuff here on Second Street.
It would be nice to have it like Frostburg has, how they pull them all in, you know, like the old days and here.
Well, you could use the parking lot, you can park both ways and use line street and below it.
As a backup. That would become a.
As an, as an overflow, because that street's wide enough that we can do the same thing, parking lot directly, you know. Parking against the wall this way, and parking against the curb coming up the street.
So I'll put you down for a volunteer.
Put a question mark there.
No problem.
Because, uh, I'll be getting three girls, the way it looks in gym.
Can get plenty of help, good, okay.
Looks like it's all dealt.
Good deal.
Okay, next meeting, ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen, six o'clock.
I make a motion with your.
All in favor?
All right.